Good evening, welcome to the January 4 Caribou Planning Board meeting. First item of business swearing-in of new members has already taken place prior to our coming to order. Second item of business, election of officers. Chairman, anybody else want this job?
No.
Make a motion that we elect Ellis here as the chairman for 2017.
Second.
I'll go along with it. All in favor? I abstain. Yep, okay, thank you. Vice chairman? Oh gee.
Who's our best chair?
Mr. Hunter.
Oh wow, I think we should change that.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay. Would you like to?
I would like to nominate Michelle as our vice chair.
Oh, okay. Second.
I don't know what that entails.
That entails covering for me when I'm not here.
Share the meeting if he's not here.
Oh, really? Okay, you better be here.
Beautiful.
Yes, all in favor? Motion carries. Secretary, Mr. White?
I'll be happy to.
Second.
Okay.
I didn't nominate myself.
Consider my calling on you in motion. Okay, all in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Setting meeting dates, times for 2017, typically the first Wednesday of the month at 5:30. That works well for me.
I'm good with it.
No requested changes?
No, I don't know if we continue that schedule.
Second.
Moving to second, do we keep that schedule? All in favor? New business, marijuana dispensaries ordinance.
So tonight, we're here to talk about the moratorium that we have in place and really the two issues that deals with, one with recreational side, the other with the medical marijuana dispensaries. So with the moratorium in place and recreational marijuana laws set to go into effect at the end of the month, Planning Board is tasked with drafting ordinances that will regulate this. The intent of the moratorium was to prevent all marijuana establishments, including recreational and medical. With the governor proposing to do away with medical marijuana, it only makes sense to have the moratorium in everything. With the articles in the Bangor Daily today saying that the medical marijuana dispensaries want an early entry to the recreational market, it only further justifies us taking a closer look at it all. So the first question that we wanted, we need to discuss and decide is whether or not we want to have the recreational establishments in our community at all. During the recent vote, 62% of the people in Caribou voted against legalization of recreational marijuana. The police chief recommends that we do not allow the recreational marijuana facilities in Caribou, and I would agree that that's the most imprudent step for us in our community at this point in time. There's too many unknowns with the laws that are allowing these operations to set up shop in Caribou, which pose large negative impacts on our community and are already stretched city resources. If the planning board feels this is something we should allow, then we need to discuss the locations based upon the zoning map, some restrictions or regulations that we want to place upon it. I'm not aware of any community across the state that has created any ordinances regulating and allowing the recreational marijuana, but Ellsworth has banned it, provided a link to their ordinance in the packet. So I guess first, we need to decide whether we want, what steps we want to take for recreational marijuana. Do we want to allow it at all, or do we want to ban it from the community?
Well, we can ban dispensaries, we can't ban private use.
Right, the recreational.
You're talking like retail.
Right.
Okay.
I think we should go with the 62% of the people that voted against it. I think voting against it shows that you don't want it, and then opening the doors to it at that point is kind of, did my vote matter?
I agree.
Would it be worth having a committee, you know, a few people from the planning board, a few people from the city council, and police chief, and members of the community, we can get together and see what the pros and cons and...
Of the recreational?
The recreational. How long is the moratorium in effect?
180 days, and it can be extended.
So that would give us time to have that discussion, being suggested. I'm not strongly in favor of the recreational side, I'm not strongly against it either. I don't have strong opinions on marijuana, one way or the other, but I think I expressed myself at the last meeting, to the extent that on the medical side, I think we need to separate the two issues.
Right, and that's what we're doing right now, so we're not getting into the medical discussion at the moment.
Okay. I felt that the moratorium as enacted by the council was unclear in that regard.
It was more, it was both medical and recreational.
It did not make that clear. It just said dispensaries.
Marijuana dispensaries is all encompassing, vote.
Well, that's, that's your reading.
Michelle, did you want to make your comment into a motion?
Well, we still had up for discussion.
Yeah.
As to whether or not we're going to have a...
Well, maybe the, we could propose that there be a workshop among interested parties here in the city council and law enforcement.
One of the, as I understand it, the Department of Agriculture is going to be the one overseeing the recreational marijuana, is that correct?
Depends on how it gets funded through the state legislature.
And my understanding is that it's going to be nine months before they have any rules or regulations to determine, you know, how, what, where, when, as far as recreational use. And I think to try to make a decision in what I would consider to be a vacuum right now until we see what the Department of Agriculture says. In other words, and I'm, I guess I'm in favor of kicking the ball down the street until such time as more information is available.
I don't know if I agree with that, because I still have to go back to 62% of the vote. Two-thirds of the people of Caribou said they didn't want it legalized.
Well, and I, and I, I agree with you on that, and therefore, I guess what I'm saying is the idea of a workshop to discuss it at this time, I think is premature. I mean, I would, I would, because we don't have the rules, we don't have the regulations. And number two, I think at best, you know, we're just going to say, okay, the voters don't want it, we don't know what the rules are. I mean, I think it's a, it's a choice of either kill it for good now, or delay it and kill it later, or potentially kill it later. And I'm speaking to recreational use. That's my other comments, thoughts?
I don't necessarily, I mean, I agree with Michelle, I don't think we should kick the ball down the road, and I, I agree with Todd with, you know, either making a committee or a workshop, because I think we should be in front of it, not waiting for it to take place, and then us trying to play catch-up afterwards. I mean, I think between us, the city council, you know, whoever else chooses to attend that workshop or whatever, we can pretty good, get a pretty good idea of what everybody wants to do.
Caribou can make it our own.
Right, I mean, and we shouldn't necessarily wait for everybody else, you know, especially based on the way that it was voted on in November, I mean, you know.
Right.
I'm not inclined to wait for some state agency which hasn't been given a mandate yet to come up with some...
Look what they've done with dispensaries, I mean, it's pretty unclear what they're doing there, you know. We're still in a fog with what's going on with that situation, so...
You want to make a motion to have a workshop?
I, yep. I would make a motion that we entertain a workshop between a few members of the planning board, and a few members of the city council, and the police chief, and make it, make it open to the public.
It would have to be open to the public.
Yeah.
Sure, a second?
I second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Who carries? Okay. Do we have any volunteers on this group?
I won't.
I would, I don't know how many people we need, but it almost sounds like...
I think we are, we're all, yes.
We should all, like, I agree.
Okay.
Do we want to schedule a date now, or do we want to move on?
Should we get with city council?
You've got to find out with the council whether you can schedule a date for now.
Okay.
I would just admonish our city manager, let's not lose sight of the 180-day deadline and have something happen by default.
Right.
I mean, you probably wouldn't.
We're at about 150, 130 days, plus or minus. So is that in November?
Uh, one...
Well, it would be at the end of May.
130, 120, 130, yeah.
The end of May.
So, yeah, we'll have to make sure it gets addressed before November.
Okay, now, let's move into the medical arena.
So as the moratorium in place also impacts the medical marijuana dispensaries, we do need to discuss how, if at all, we want to change the ordinance as it relates to that. If we, the concerns from the communities, and it's in the Bangor Daily today, the medical marijuana dispensaries is that they want to be the front for the recreational side of things. So the current ordinance that we have for the medical marijuana dispensaries is on the following pages there in the packet. It's definitely something that we need to talk about how we want to change, if we want to change, or if this ordinance, which has been on the books for a while now, is still meeting the requirements and the demands of the community.
Well, at the very least, I think we probably would want, if we're going to keep it at all, we should add a section that says that they can't branch out into the recreational side of things, which is for profit.
I also wonder if we would be able to have any information from that committee or meeting, or what have you, as to how the current ones have impacted the community. I would like to know, you know, law enforcement-wise, et cetera.
Which community do you mean?
Caribou.
Well, we don't have one.
There's no dispensaries in Caribou.
So there has been only pick.
Medical?
Right. There's, there's other communities...
That's a prescriber, that's not a dispensary.
Right, he's not a dispensary, but there are eight other dispensaries around the state that, I mean, they...
A total of eight.
We have a gentleman.
Likely have had impacts on the, on the communities that they're located in, so it's good to look into.
There's only one in all of the rest accounting of the municipal communities. What you have going on behind Dodo's is illegal.
We don't know, I don't even know what's going on behind Dodo's, what's going on there.
Just drive out there on the right time of day.
Ask your manager.
It's part of the problem with medical marijuana, it's the loophole that the state allows to continue to have.
What loophole is that?
The caregivers.
Educating. Okay.
Are you familiar with the caregivers?
Yeah, are we saying we've got some that are twisting the law?
Yeah, this is what we've discussed, and they're six people, they can serve as six people, right? Is that what it is?
Five, five plus themselves. And they can have six plants per person, the 36 plants. And typically, they, they group up, so you might have a husband, wife, or girlfriend, and even, even more so than that. So you can have...
Hundreds.
Exactly.
Of plants.
Exactly.
And this is the part that concerns me, is the fact that it's regulated by DHHS, but yet there's no regulations per se, I think, which is what we've discussed in the past. You know, you can say you're allowed X amount of plants for X amount of people, but there's no regulations to it.
But I can tell you that the dispensaries, like ourselves, are audited on an annual basis.
Correct. And I wasn't, I wasn't trying to throw that towards you, it's just, in general, the fact that it's covered by DHHS, and that there's no mandates or statutes or anything like that for the caregivers prompts other problems that are going to arise within the community.
Well, a lot of people have stated that the medical marijuana statute was very poorly written, it does not, it's missing a lot of detail, there's a lot of voids, and so that's why you have a lot of these unknowns, you know. Mr. Smith?
May I, Mr. Chair? It's not the first time I hear that complaint about the current law on the books. The law on the books does include for regulation and enforcement, however, there has been none. No one has taken the steps to go into these illegal care providing dispensaries. DHHS does go around the state in the eight that they have that are lawful and regulated and licensed, but others aren't particularly licensed, so they don't really know where to go, and a lot of times are turning a blind eye to it. I'd be surprised if your law enforcement here has even gone in there and done an inspection, or are they going to say they need a warrant? Well, they certainly would have probable cause. So I don't like to see that as a way of brandishing why you'd be opposed to the medical marijuana dispensary, but it does give me a footstep to get in and suggest, there is already a site design application filed in the city of Caribou, which predated the moratorium. Has anybody here seen the response by Attorney Solomon in regards to my request after the last meeting in December?
I have. I have not.
I have not.
I've got a few copies I can pass you.
And I, I disagree with the suggestion that the moratorium as was placed is specific to medical.
Excuse me, repeat it.
I disagree, the moratorium that's in place is specific to medical. It only talks about dispensaries, never cites medical. Medical has already been approved in his law. The city ordinance of Caribou is approved in his law, and it envisions medical dispensaries to take the step back if you try to undo what has been on your books since 2010. It's an interesting step. We suggested a statute that was in violation, and Attorney Solomon has reacted or responded the way that he did. I don't know if it's reached this, this board yet, but what we're asking at this level is either accept or deny the application as it's been presented, so then, instead of just holding us in limbo, there's steps that can be taken to protect the interests of state alternatives. It wouldn't be fair, moratorium or otherwise, to just leave it there sitting for the total of 180 days, especially where it was presented prior to the moratorium, and the moratorium is not clear, and it should be violated legally. I think that's essentially the position that we're coming in on. At least, take a look at the application, say whether or not it's appropriate application or not. If you only want to deny it because of the moratorium, well, it'd be good to have that, you know, on record and reflected. I guess that's why we're here.
I have not seen the application, I'm aware of its existence, and I think I expressed concern at the last meeting, that it was submitted before the moratorium was enacted by the council, and therefore it is owed a hearing, in my opinion.
I'm not certain how I even interpret the email that I just received, because I think the intent was to impose a moratorium, but said attorney is waiting for a response. This doesn't, to me, change anything that's on the agenda for the planning committee tonight.
When, I received a copy, and maybe I should have forwarded it to everybody, when Jim Chandler, Assistant City Manager, asked Rick Solomon for an opinion, I got a response basically saying that it's poorly written, it's not detailed enough.
Which, the moratorium, or?
The moratorium. And reading in between the lines, I suspected that Rick Solomon basically was responding to the moratorium from a recreational use only. And I asked Jim Chandler if he had told Mr. Solomon that the city council's intent with the moratorium was all dispensaries, meaning medical and recreational, and Jim said he had not made that clear to Rick Solomon.
I had a conversation with Mr. Solomon last week as well, and him and I, we discussed a few things in the moratorium. And really, Rick, he did say, you know, we have had this ordinance on the books for a few years now, and if we're not going to make any changes to the medical side, the medical ordinance as it exists today, then we should move along from the medical side, process the application, take it off the moratorium, and just keep the moratorium on the recreational side. So that's kind of where, where we're at here tonight. I think with this ordinance here that's been on the books for a little bit, it's served the purpose that we've had, that we've needed, and if the planning board feels that the ordinance is still suitable for what we need, then let's, let's move forward, let's take the, clear up the moratorium to have it not include the medical side, and let's begin the work to process the application that we have.
I would be in favor of that approach.
I would be in favor of deciding that after the committee meeting.
So we, we can't, we can regulate medical dispensaries, but we can't ban them from the community. One area that we've looked at is what other communities have done as well, is, you know, fees for, the application process, and that's something we want to look at for, you know, moving forward perhaps, is how do we regulate this and make sure the application is updated, you know, are they still operating or not? Similar to how we do it for liquor licenses and those types of things, where it's an annual renewal process, and, you know, do we look at some type of fee at some point down the line to help cover the costs associated with that? So that's something that we, we want to look at, that's not something that would have to be addressed here tonight, or part of, the ordinance change tonight, it could be part of the broader Chapter 13 rewrite, which we'll get back to in February. But I, I would say it's probably in our best interest to make a decision one way or another as to whether or not we believe this ordinance satisfies what our needs are for regulating medical marijuana dispensaries, and moving forward with the issue.
I think regardless whether we're going to make changes to it now, later, they have an application before us, and based on, I guess from what Rick has said, you know, we already have medical marijuana dispensary ordinance on file, we can't deny them the opportunity to look at that based on the way it's written right now. You know, I mean, we ran into this with, when we denied the apartment facilities on Rust Street, because the way the ordinance was written, it was not allowed. If we have this on the books right now as an allowed option, then I think we need to, need to address that. You know, regardless of our personal feelings with regards to the dispensary and stuff like that, it's on the books, that's the way it is, I think we need to proceed with it.
Another point I made, Dr. Chavelle just advised that at the time that he provided the city with his application, he presented his check for payment of the fee, and they accepted it in cash, and his check cleared, so...
The application fee, you mean for the site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
As well as the sign, as well as the signed permit.
I would...
I think we should schedule the site plan review.
Yeah, I was going to say that the city's acceptance of the funds kind of signifies an agreement has been made to proceed.
If we could see the application, why would we cash a check or a signed fee?
I don't know, maybe it was all in one check.
Well, maybe, maybe we should move it, it looks like it's happened.
I would, although I'm the chair and I run the meeting, I believe that I'm allowed to still make motions, I would make a motion that we proceed with the application for the medical marijuana dispensary, and that we basically, and I'm not sure if we should be directing this to Mr. Solomon, or to the city council, for them to direct it, Mr. Solomon, but I think that the moratorium should be applied to recreational marijuana use only, because we've had the medical ordinance on the books for a number of years, and I think we need to proceed with processing that application.
For the sake of clarity, can we make that two motions? One, to schedule a hearing for the site plan review, and two, to express our feelings to the city council about restricting the moratorium to recreational use.
Okay, so let's go to the first one. I move we proceed with processing the medical marijuana application under the existing ordinance that has been on the Caribou books for several years. Is there a second?
I second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any unanimous? Okay.
Fair is fair.
I think, Austin, some direct, some direction, please.
Yes, so the next meeting of the planning board will be February 1st. I believe that gives us enough time to advertise, notify, do all the requirements, and...
It's two weeks, isn't it? Isn't the requirement two weeks?
It's 14 days for mailings, I think that might be a little bit longer, but we've still got plenty of time to get it done.
Okay.
So we'll schedule that for the first.
I'm, I'm, I'm still new at this. I'm foggy in regards to, you know, what can the planning board do as far as recommending things to the council, because the moratorium that the council, the emergency moratorium that they passed, was never brought to us. I mean, I found about, I found out about it in the newspaper. And so, you know, I kind of view the council as having superior authority over us, and so, I don't know, it kind of makes me question, are we a mute body, because anything we do or don't do, they're going to override us?
No. The planning board certainly makes recommendations on ordinances as it relates to the land use code. I think that, you know, the planning board can make a recommendation based upon the facts that we've looked at here tonight, and say that we need to alter the moratorium, or clarify, I should say, not alter, clarify the moratorium, that the medical marijuana side of it is up to par of the standards that the planning board believes are necessary, and so we should remove that portion of the moratorium and clarify that it's, applies to the recreational side. And I believe that's a reasonable recommendation for the planning board.
We can make the recommendation, they can still say no, but we...
You want to make that motion?
That's the second motion, right?
I have a question.
Okay. But it's not the fact that we...
When it comes to...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
When it comes to the current ordinance that we have, and the, you know, state laws and local laws, are we allowed to limit the amount of these that come into a community?
The medical ones?
Yes.
There's only eight in the state.
The state limits it.
There's only one, and what's the county allow?
Am I correct that you're moving, you would be moving yours from Eagle Lake to Caribou, correct?
Yes, sir.
Just the retail operation, not the grow?
Correct, yes, sir.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't, until the state were to allow more medical marijuana dispensers, I don't know that we would have to be concerned about.
So all eight wouldn't have to move here?
No, because they're, they're separated legally by geographic region.
Right, but, so you said the state doesn't, or state regulates only eight, correct?
Right.
That's the regulations for the state?
Correct.
So then we can, if we want to change our ordinance, we can make a say, limit a one.
I would still put that in there.
Still put what in?
The limit of one.
I mean, you know, that's, that's something we can change, but it's not going to affect their application.
It won't affect them, but it will affect...
Others.
Futures, so we don't have more than one in this community.
And that's something that we can do as part of the further Chapter 13.
Part of the Chapter 13 work, absolutely.
Well, the other thing is my understanding in granting, and again, educate me from wrong, in granting a permission for this organization to move forward, we can put stipulations in the permission that the permission that is being granted is for medical use only, period, and does not extend to recreational use, and that if ever they should want to do recreational use, they have to come back and go through the process all over again under a different set of rules. I mean, that's perfectly...
That says your ordinance would be already written?
Correct.
And be fair.
Okay. Okay. Did you have a motion you wanted to make?
Yeah, I moved that the board, I'm not sure on the vehicle, whether we...
You would recommend that the council clarify the moratorium, that the planning board believes the medical marijuana ordinance as it's currently written is sufficient for the city of Caribou, clarify that we should...
And the moratorium apply only to recreational use?
Yes.
So, so my motion, I guess, is to ask Austin to generate a memo to the council.
I'll second that motion.
I'll take that to the council on Monday.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous?
Good work, gentlemen, ladies.
Moving right on.
He felt my eyes.
When we do that committee, it would be good for you to...
If you would, yes. Your insight would be great with that.
Talking about...
You're, you're...
You're a major player.
For the...
Stakeholder is the word I was looking for.
That works.
Okay. Okay, is that the end of this particular agenda item?
Yes.
The marijuana dispensary part?
No, we did not. We'll have those in February. What's that?
Oh, no minutes to approve.
We don't have minutes?
We didn't have any to. Aren't you the secretary?
She takes them. She was making sure everybody got that chapter 13 squared away.
That's why I shook my finger at her.
Any old business?
Well, I do have a question on the old business. Did you ever happen to find out if we had any saved copies of all that work we did while you were not sitting at that table?
I have not had an opportunity to look fully in depth. I know that there's a lot of meeting minute notes and notes that Denise has taken, so I'm confident that we'll be able to...
Sort it out.
Sort everything out, and we'll...
You're talking about the work for revising Chapter 13?
So, we'll be... It's scheduled a few days, over the next few weeks, to focus on that, and we'll have some good progress on Chapter 13.
I saw Austin at the Happy Noon Year celebration last Saturday, and I asked him which hat he was wearing. He said his own.
Okay, with regards to other, or old business, something we discussed last meeting was with regards to Dr. Ortiz's apartment building, and then subsequent parking and stuff like that. As everyone, I think, is aware, Napolis is now closing.
Oh, I didn't know.
Which now, they closed, what, the 23rd or 24th, something like that.
Really?
Yep. So, therein lies, one of the questions we had, is that, you know, he had an agreement...
No.
The owner of the property hasn't changed, though. That agreement still would be in effect.
I was going to say, actually, it's easier for him to honor the agreement.
Well, it would be, but, I mean, therein lies part of that discussion, which we got sidetracked from with regards to parking and the definition of off-site parking.
Yes, and I believe Jim was going to go back and look at whatever happened to the internal parking that was supposed to be constructed.
On the first go-round that he didn't complete prior to coming before us last year, I think it was at this time.
Well, that's just an action item that Jim took that probably got lost.
Well, we can ask our city manager if and when he has time to look into the...
It's not like it's an emergency.
Are you understanding what the issue is? That when Dr. Ortiz was initially granted permission to have an apartment, he was... Part of the application was that he was going to build internal parking inside the building, which never happened, and now he's come to us for a second apartment and says he's going to satisfy the parking requirement with an agreement across the street with Napolis. The question is being asked, the fact that he never completed the initial requirement, should that prevent him from proceeding with the second?
We looked at that. We looked at that back in 2015, when he was in front of this board while I was here, about his second apartment.
But the fact that he came before us, well, I guess it wouldn't be before us, because I don't think any of us were on the board at that time when he first did it.
For the initial one?
When he did his initial apartment. You know, the fact that he didn't finish everything that we granted him, you know, the okay to do, and it's still detrimental, let's say, to the parking issues that are downtown.
If you gentlemen want to leave, that's perfectly acceptable. Don't feel like you're interrupting us. I know that you've got long rides ahead of you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you. Well, Phil, back to... I think as Bob just said, this is not an urgent issue, whereas...
No, but I just don't want to get...
I don't want to lose it.
Yeah, I don't want to lose sight of it.
I want resolution of it.
Yeah.
And Michelle's been doing some research on shared parking ordinance, and we should look at it sometime, too.
But under the current parking ordinance for parking lots, there is off-street overnight parking available.
Correct. But if somebody comes and buys that parking lot tomorrow...
Which it's not for sale.
Everything's got a price.
Eighty percent.
Everything's got a price.
Eighty percent of the voters.
Everything's got a price.
Austin has a point.
Yeah, well, no, I understand.
That's a city-owned law.
Yeah.
The problem is plowing it.
Well, I'm not even going to get into the plowing or maintenance of it or anything like that, because everybody's well aware of that. That the ordinance states he has to provide off-street parking, and I was not able to find the definition of off-street parking in my book, but I know it's defined, I just haven't been able to wrap my hands around it yet.
But he met that requirement with the agreement that he had, and the board approved it two years ago.
But you can't. You can't. That's why I initially said something, I don't know, it must have been three or four months after we approved it.
What's the end goal?
I just want him to provide the required parking, you know, give him ample time to make his property conforming, because as it stands right now, it's a non-conforming property.
But he came to this board with the application, with the agreement that he had off-street parking provided for his tenants in the new apartment, and the board...
But we agree.
...in action back in 2015.
Right, and I believe, I profess, that our ignorance with regards to some of the way some of this stuff is written, we allowed a non-conforming property to take place.
But he provided...
He didn't provide it because Napolis doesn't have it to give to him.
He has an agreement with Napolis to allow them off-street parking, and this board at that point in time said it would become a landlord-tenant dispute, because he's met the requirements of our ordinance.
But we agreed that he has, but in theory, he hasn't. If you read the ordinance, he hasn't, because he hasn't provided...
So, are we going on theory, or are we going on what the planning board agreed?
We're going on the ordinance. I mean, the ordinance says he needs to require...
And the planning board said that that met the spirit of the ordinance to provide off-street parking. The agreement that he had in place with Napolis...
In ignorance, we did.
Can I make a motion on this old business?
Ignorance or not, we still did it.
But we need to rectify it, because we allowed a non-conforming property.
I would like to make a motion that this issue die, that the planning board acted as it acted. I believe that there is off-street parking provided through the agreement across the street. End of discussion, and I don't know why we keep beating this dead horse.
Because we did something wrong.
I don't know if anybody's interested in second...
I'm confused all the time.
I know, but we need to, because it's going to come back to us. If there's a legal issue there, it's going to come back to the board, because we approved it.
Is there a second to the motion?
Yes.
There is?
Second.
Okay, we have a... Okay, now, further discussion, but we have a motion and a second to drop this issue. Pardon?
Are we supposed to do that?
Well, what... This is Monday morning quarterbacking.
It's not Monday morning quarterbacking, I'm trying to...
This is after the fact.
Yeah, I'm trying to correct something we did wrong that potentially down the road we can be held liable for.
But I disagree that we did anything wrong, because he has an agreement with across the street, and so, he has the, you know...
If that agreement goes away, it comes up again for discussion.
But Gary doesn't have the spots to give him.
Why do you say that?
Because regardless whether he still owns a business, as said as a business, at the time we approved it, it's as a business, he's required X amount of spots. If he gives away two of those spots, he doesn't have enough spots to...
Well, he's closed now, so that's moot.
I realize that, but I mean, at the time that this came up for discussion, he didn't have the spots.
Okay, so the fact that he's closed, and he now has the spots, I mean, that's like saying the house is burnt, but if we only would have had a pumper truck here yesterday, we could have saved it.
If Gary sells the building...
Then it's a new issue.
It's a new issue.
Then it's a new issue.
He has to get permission from that new owner again, so then this will come back before us.
It'll come back eventually, but I don't think we should spend more time worried about it until it does.
I agree. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion that we let this die?
I don't know what we're supposed to do that. It seems weird.
Four, and all... How many opposed?
I'm just abstaining.
Okay, so we got four in favor of letting it die, one opposed, and one abstention. Thank you, ladies. I'm going to move, since I'm on roll. I'm going to move, will you join?
I'll second that.
I still think the chair can adjourn without...
Clarit...